Meeting to order, please rise for the fight of the legion.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the free public way to express themselves, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Grund.
Grund?
You don't need her.
Am I Grund?
Boss, present. Pippia, Graham, Hughes.
Present.
Frye, Roller, here. From.
Present.
From.
Present.
I'm glad each of you are here tonight. The next item is a regular meeting from October 28th. Does anybody have amendments?
Mayor, I have one. It's on the last page in the roundtable. And in that first sentence, if we could say, CM Boss said November Civics Day is about And then Fire Chief Richardson and one of the firefighters will speak to the ninth grade class.
Did you get those changes in the first sentence, Sammy?
I can give them to her.
Okay.
Okay. And the only thing, I just want to make sure that we spell Stengelmeyer's right. I'm not quite sure if it is or isn't, but you can double check that. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve as amended.
Move approve the minutes, the regular meeting of October 28, 2019, as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Five oh. The next thing is the minutes for the November 1st meeting. Does anyone have amendments? Otherwise, a motion as presented.
I move to approve the special meeting minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh. Very good. Public comments. First thing I would like to do is say congratulations, Jason. Congratulations, Kevin. Todd, who's not here. Gina, who's not here. And Keith, I don't know if he's back there. No. But anyway, for the elections and onward, for our city. Are there any public comments? If so, please come to the podium and you can give your name, your address, your ward.
Good evening. Tony Dever, 1110 Zelfer Drive, Ward 1. I'm here tonight for Marysville Main Street, and I'll be quick. A couple of things. I would like to personally invite you guys to a joint meeting between Chamber and Main Street on December 11th at 7:00 a.m. at the Wagon Wheel. We're going to have some public discussion on the, kind of the future direction of the two groups, and would certainly be interested in your input as a, as a big partner to both groups and, and kind of how we operate. So, nothing else. Breakfast will be provided, so you can enjoy that if you want, and please bring any input and questions you got.
So you said, is it 7:00 a.m. on?
7:00 a.m.
On December 7?
11th.
11th, okay. There was too many sevens. Okay.
And secondly, real quick, for some clarification. So, on July 10th, we met with the Admin Finance Committee, both Chamber and Main Street, Darlene and Terry and Diane, and you were there, Mayor. At that time, we had talked about the services both groups provide and, kind of the funding we get from the city, and I think we all walked away thinking everything was fine at that meeting. And so Main Street, we typically get our, our funding on in January and July, and as of this date, we have not received our July money, our July payment.
From the city?
Yeah, from the city.
Oh, do you know what?
We checked with, kind of Cindy last week, and she had maybe indicated that there were still some questions about our finances that, that the council had that was holding that payment up. So, I guess if there's any clarification we can provide or...
What did we ask, what did we ask for in July? Do you remember? We asked for financials, I think, didn't we?
Yeah.
And did you?
Had been provided.
And you provided those?
At first, I provided that budget, and, and then we, we provide the actual financials from 2018.
And was there anything else that we asked you to provide?
Not that I was aware of.
Counsel, do you know anything we asked for?
I don't remember anything else.
I don't either.
So you're just scared, you know, I have to report to the board on all the treasurer stuff, so when that payment didn't come in, we're just...
Could Cindy say specifically what it was?
The financials. If, I mean, if it clears everything up, can you just resend the financials to Cindy?
Yeah, I've got that, again, that sheet that I provided last, and for Darlene, I broke out the City of Marysville money. I think you talked about that on the council meeting, so.
All right. I think we can...
I can send it to PDF, but...
If the council's okay, we could just send them the money with that.
Yeah.
Do you want to go ahead and proceed with payment at this time? Do you want us to make a motion to do that? Or you'll just take care of it? Because we have a contract.
We'll just take care of it.
Okay.
As always, we appreciate your support and look forward to the future.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Anyone else? All right, business and discussion items. The first thing is David Oldy with the Veterans' Law.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Just want to let everybody know, we are getting the wall September 17th through the 20th of 2020. It is now official. We can publicly announce that. We had to sign a contract, sent in a down payment, and we want to thank all local businesses that, for their financial support, individual supports, and that helped us get the money down. We'll have to do some fundraising yet for a couple more thousand to meet our $10,000 goal, but that shouldn't be a problem. But there were, part of that contract we had to sign with the Vietnam Wall folks is that we have to have security. I already talked to Chief Ackerman, our Legion Riders, in case there's any protest, we have to have a plan in place. And we're going to meet again in the spring, I think, with our committee and start discussing that and include Chief Ackerman in those, those talks.
Have there been protests?
They must have, because it's in the contract.
Okay.
So I'm thinking they probably had some in the past, but I don't think we're going to expect any, but been talking to my Legion Riders, they're here tonight. We're working with area. I think they'll bring in some other Legion Riders in case we'll happen to need a flagline or something like that to keep people at a distance that are protesting.
Well, we'll hope and pray that doesn't happen.
I hope so too, now.
Okay. Oh, you just wanted to confirm that it's a go.
It is a go, no.
I know you had already gotten permission from us for the Felthausen Field, so...
Right. That is, and it's, nothing's changed that I've known, and I'm still working, letting everybody know, Mr. Frogel and Mr. Richardson, as well, what's going on.
Great, great. Exciting to see that. That would be great.
Mayor, since David's here, I would like to ask him a couple of questions.
Okay.
From your resignation letter. Anyway, thank you for your 15 years of service and congratulation on the new position, but in your letter, you have some concerns. You mentioned that with your departure, there'll be no drug investigation experience, sexual assault investigation experience, public speaking awareness experience, no leadership training experience, no investigating knowledge, and case solving skills. Has the department not been doing cross-training?
They have. Does Chief Ackerman want to come up here?
So are we going to be lacking in all?
Your experience, besides Chief Ackerman, I've been there the longest, and we are...
We cross-train everybody to succeed the person ahead of them, but because you lose 50% of your department, we've lost all our experience. We have to retrain all the new people. Yes, I mean, they don't come in trained fully, so we have to train them.
Well, I understand that, but we're ongoing cross-training.
Always. Always. We train to succeed the person ahead of you. We have certain people to train narcotics, certain people to train children investigations. You have to have special certifications for all that now. We do that all the time.
Besides myself, I think it was Officer Self who has that experience, but she's only been with the department under eight years, six years, six years. So she hasn't had enough cases under her belt to be confident to go to trial, testify in court. She is a very well-known officer, and she is well-versed in that, but just the experience of testifying, she hasn't had that yet. Drug cases, like I said, after we lost Officer Leece and Officer Williams, that was pretty much it, besides myself, you know, who kind of pushed things. I don't have anybody that really wants to have the knowledge and the skill set to get really in-depth in that and know what they're doing.
Certain officers will be certified and trained in certain areas. Not everybody likes or feels comfortable with certain areas.
Oh, sure.
So we focus on there are certain areas that they're fluent in and work on. We are going to have some lighter areas for a while, but they will all be trained there eventually, just takes time.
Okay, and then James, Leece is coming back, so we will have that experience, and then the new...
Unofficially, he is. I haven't got a date yet.
And then the, the new Assistant Chief should have some...
He's got, he's got a lot of experience.
A lot of experience?
Yeah. For a while, that's going to help out a lot.
And then Larry Wenzel's coming back part-time?
He said he would fill in part-time, probably at least the first of the year, as we need to fill in holes.
And he's got a lot of experience.
He's got other jobs already, but he can help us out a pinch.
Well, that sounds good. Then I have another question. You say that over the years, you see a lot of negativity thrown at our department from society, but even worse, the criticism from our city council. Some have tried to undermine us and personally spied on us to discredit our staff and department. I'm not aware of any of that.
I am. Do you want to comment, Chief?
I just feel I, I shouldn't be answering these. I should be the chief. This is, I'll answer, but first thing on, there are times where we've been questioned and followed people.
Meet council members here?
Yeah, and they'll go through our alley constantly through the night. Like, we've seen lots of it over, over the years, but...
With the current council?
Huh?
With the current council?
Some, some. I feel very, I shouldn't be answering that question, because I've worked for this council. They've got this program appropriate for Dave to talk about his resignation. In open, in open session.
But it is, I mean, this has been...
I know, but this is an open, this is an open session, and he's still an employee. You cannot talk about an employee in open session.
But you gave it to the paper.
Yes, you gave it to the paper.
But to drill him on it, I think it's inappropriate, inappropriate.
Well, it's an open document at this point. I, you know, I guess, I didn't know what she was going to do tonight, but, you know, when you make comments like that, though, and, you know, we, we don't know who you're referring to, and so it makes, it tarnishes all of our reputations, because we don't know what you're referring to, so...
I, I pass council, I have spied on us. We caught them.
We have.
In our parking lot, watching us.
But not the current.
We, I'm not going to answer that question. Does it turn the accused of council of doing something like that?
Well, it's in his letter, though.
I, I don't think it's fair to ask them of a, if it's current. They're, they're saying that, yes, past council members have done this. It's not, it's not, it's not appropriate to call an individual out for this.
Okay, Austin, but he, it's, it's accusing me of these things.
I guess I can answer your questions if you have.
Darling, do you have anything else?
Darling's got a good point. Everybody's entitled to face their accuser.
Not in an open session with an employee.
Well...
There are employment laws.
This was put out, directed at the council, Todd.
I'm sure, it was.
Okay. If this is so, you, you should have specified who did it.
I didn't write.
When they did it and how they did it.
No, no, no.
And not try to cover this up.
Nobody covered anything up. That's absolutely ridiculous. I didn't write it. It was presented to me. If you're offended, not my problem. That's the man that just walked out that wrote it.
But then you gave it to the paper. You gave the letter to them.
I did not give that to the paper. I gave it to, to be put in the...
Packet, which becomes an open document.
Sure, all, all resignations go to the, to the agenda.
No.
Be approved.
All resignation letters do not go to the agenda.
How many times have I seen resignations in the agenda?
Only the police departments.
No, I don't think that's right at all, over the years. No.
Well, anyway, I, yeah...
I, I just say, I just can't answer a forward letter that I didn't write.
Are you okay, Darling?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
But if, you know, in the future, I think of some of these things need to be brought if you need to go into executive session to...
If, if it's...
Talk about them.
If somebody writes a letter like that, I can't change it. I can't take a resignation into executive session, hey, we need to, the problems. I forward it to the City Hall to be put in there.
I would like to say, though, the letter that we talked about in the September meeting was dated in March, and it accused things of council, and it was the previous council. So I guess that's, I think that's what she's leading to, is that when we met, we met in that meeting with the police department, police meeting, and we asked Sergeant Oldy about the letter that was dated, I think it was in March that we met and discussed in September, and we specifically said, is this about the current council? And he said, no. So I think that's probably why...
I don't remember him saying no, because it wouldn't have been a previous council, because it was only in March, you guys have still been in council for a year. I don't, to be honest, I don't remember what the letter said, not having it in front of me.
Okay, well, anyway, that, my, my, my remembrance of that meeting was that he said it was from a prior council, so...
Again, I don't remember.
Do you remember that, Austin? Were you there?
I was at the meeting. I, I, I can't, I can't truthfully say anything that I remember.
I just don't want to say something I don't remember exactly what the word said.
Well, one, one particular item was that officers being on food stamps, and it was something that had happened 15 years previous. That was one thing that was mentioned in the letter.
Anyway, okay, we will just move forward. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Convention and Tourism on Christmas.
Good evening, everyone. Michelle Whitesell with Marysville Convention and Tourism. I'm here on behalf of Convention and Tourism, the Marysville Main Street, and Marysville Chamber of Commerce organizations. We are once again working on our Christmas activities. It's hard to believe that time is already here, and our Christmas opening will be Saturday, December 7th. You should have all had a letter in the packet outlining just really a request for a street closure. That, that's really all our request is each year, but also letting you know of all of the activities that are going on that day, and not even all of them were mentioned in here. We have a lot going on. I'm so proud of all of our organizations. It seems like everybody is, you know, kind of inserting in their open house, or their crash at the library, or we've even got the school doing their Deck the Halls event in the Art Center, and I think that all just makes it such a well-rounded thing for people of all ages to enjoy. The only change I think that would be different from last year is, and I, forgive me, because I don't know what this means, a UTV, apparently that was what was passed that can be written if you license through the city. We typically ask each year that people be allowed to, to take those types of vehicles and golf carts and things like that, just for the parade, because we really could use lots of participation in that event. So I added that UTV wording in there. I'm not sure what people normally bring. I told Austin, we maybe have three or four of those types of entries, if, if that, but that should be the only change from 2018, so if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
If not, you can approve the request.
Move approve the request from Marysville Convention and Tourism.
I second it.
Any discussion? Thanks for pulling it all together. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh. All right. The next item is Convention and Tourism is a transient guest tax.
Brian Frogel, Chairman of the Convention and Tourism, and I think in your packet, you should have some information about transient guest tax, and what our committee is asking for is approval for a one and a half percent increase on the permanent transient, transient guest tax. I think the information that's provided, provided to you, hopefully you should have answered a lot of your questions, but we're just asking for the one and a half percent.
You talked to the local motel owners about this?
Yes, they, they totally understand why we're doing it, but they, they see the benefits of us going out there. We had a committee that went out and actually called them and talked to them as well, and, and they said that they see the benefit, why we would do this.
I just think we're pricing ourselves out of business here in Marysville on motels, but...
They didn't think, you see that Seneca has 2%?
Yeah.
They didn't see any, like, people might go to Seneca, say, people often travel through, I'd say business people, wouldn't pick Seneca over Marysville.
Well, if they're, hopefully if they're doing business in Marysville, I sure wouldn't think they drive to Seneca, because they're going to spend way more money driving there than what it would be in the tax. As you can see, what it would cost, what the room rate was, and, you know, one and a half percent is, is, is not going to cost, you know, I don't even believe, anything's going to be a dollar. Isn't that right? It's not, not...
98 cents.
Yeah. So if they want to go to drive to Seneca for, for a dollar and spend six or, six or seven dollars...
Well, I just meant they might stop there instead of coming on to Marysville.
Right. Our, our motels are, are, we have, we have, we have good motels, we have good people who run motels, and our motels are busy. Talk, the committee that talked to them, the motels even said recently that their motels have been busier. So, obviously, people, people are staying here.
One comment I want to make on this, and I made it before I got off the council four years ago. Marysville was booming when we had wind towers and all that work in town here, and the comment was made at that time by me when I said on the council, you need to set on that money. And we have spent a lot of that money over the, let me finish my comment. We have spent a lot of money over the last five, six years on different items, different approaches, and I know it is to bring people to Marysville, but we should have been not spending as much of that money banking on some of that, because now, for the last five years, there has been no major booming economy to the city of Marysville, like the Wind Tower people and stuff like that coming here and staying in the motels, Brian.
But I, but I would also say that we, out of our budget, we have money taken out of our budget.
I, I...
That, you know, I am all for giving money to Main Street, to Chamber of Commerce, to the Castor House.
Fireworks.
Fireworks. Is any of those put heads on beds?
Yep.
$20,000, does it? I guess I'm asking you guys. So, we have no control over $20,000 when we, when we get our budget, that you guys have decided to spend that that has literally zero promotion to Marysville.
Right.
So we're asking, why is that coming out of our Convention and Tourism budget? And that's our question to you guys. Because we feel it shouldn't be. If you take all that, if you take $19,500 out, that'd be a big plus. We had something we wouldn't have to worry about. You know, to make yourself, and this is honest, Michelle can verify for this, she goes to these conferences and stuff. They, she says she's from Marysville. We, we are getting our name out there. Those people know. We, 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 she's got a bus tour coming in next year, which has been our goal for, how many years have we been talking about trying to do that?
Years.
So, yes, and so, you know, you have 25 to 30, 40 people coming on a bus, they're going to spend money in this town.
And I know the Christmas program, you know, the lights and stuff brings people to Marysville. I'm not telling you that stuff you're doing doesn't bring stuff to Marysville.
No, I know, but I don't say this...
But we don't need to blow 100% of our budget every year on stuff either.
And if you go to one of our meetings, we meet, you know, an hour and a half, we have a lot of discussion on these items on, is it beneficial to spend money or not? And we have turned down a lot of advertisement on certain things too, because we just can't afford it.
Right.
And we also look at, how many people is this going to reach?
Mm-hmm.
You know, so is it going to be beneficial for, 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 for Marysville? Our best interest at this point is, is heads on beds, and what's the interest for Marysville? How, how are we going to get people to come to Marysville?
Right.
And when we have to take our biggest events and start cutting money from advertising for that, that's a problem.
All right. Okay. Is a 2%, I'm sorry, is a 2% Marshall County on top of the 5%? Do the, do the hotels? So the 2% when it's Marshall County is outside of Marysville, and it doesn't include any city, any hotels in Marysville?
Right.
Well, we example the, the new motel in Blue Rapids.
Okay.
They don't collect, forgive me. I don't believe that they, they collect, but in that instance, they would pay the county sales tax, because there would be no transient guest tax for the city.
So it's not a, a double layer, it's just one? Okay. I just...
And that's how, Mayor Burn, if you have, have read, I think it's really advocate about the tourism funds that the county has collected because of instances like that, that Waterville decided to create their own Convention and Tourism Committee for Waterville, so that they can actually use those monies, because the Weaver was bringing in a lot of money, and it was sitting at the county level and not being used, and now they're going to be able to use that locally, so that's really exciting for them.
The hotel rates, now, I've not ever seen rates like $61.64. Are they including, like, the local sales tax, or, now, Thunderbird quotes $56, you know, straight amount. Usually hotels, it's like, they never have cents, just when they, do you know?
I made those calls, those are the numbers they give you before tax. And I, and it's considered, I said, here's what I'm looking for, and that's what I was telling you.
Is there any other questions?
I have one, Brian. I was questioning about the fact of, if you guys got bylaws about who, who does pay or collect and pay this tax to you, or, or are you collecting from everybody that maybe should be paying that isn't paying?
Well, this is, these, these taxes are collected at the motels themselves. We...
That was the question that was brought to me, that there's...
I'll, I'll answer this question. We don't collect any taxes at the city, including theirs. The state collects all the taxes. The, well, mine is probably property taxes, but the state...
I understand.
The, the hotels send the, this tax to the state. The state takes their small portion out of it and send it to the city.
Yes, but that's not my question. My question is, if somebody has something and they're, they're, they're actually performing guest deal...
Like bed and breakfast.
Huh?
Bed and breakfast.
Yes, and that, some of, maybe that, everybody's not contributing to the state what they should, if there a bylaw or something that shows what the requirement is, so that everybody that should be collecting this tax is collecting it versus...
If I, if I, if I spot somebody, if I happen to know somebody as a part of the city that qualifies under the state rules, I try to pass that along to the state. Otherwise, the state is the enforcing agent on this.
However it works, it don't matter, I've just had a question asked of me about it, and I said I didn't know the answer, and I thought maybe I could find out.
That's actually not a bad question, Terry. The transient guest tax at places like a bed and breakfast or an Airbnb, it depends on the number of bedrooms, and that would be, they would register through the Kansas Department of Revenue. So I can't comment specifically if any of our Airbnbs here in Marysville pay that guest tax, but I could research that and, and look through the state if that's something that you're interested in.
Oh, do you, do you, well, we, we get the money. So do we get a list of who paid it?
We do, but that is confidential.
Okay.
Uh, because they don't want, they allow, uh, the financial head or the clerk of the city to see it. But beyond that, I can see the list, that's how I know, uh, to, whether to talk to the state about collecting from a certain individual or, and I've, and I've gotten people on that list.
Right.
Uh, that weren't there before. Uh, so I, I've been able to watch that. And the, and the state does look into it when they can to.
I can help answer that question.
Well, come to the podium then, Nick.
Yeah. I've had to roll through all this since I recently opened the Trailhead Suites.
Is that considered?
So, the rules are that with two or more sleeping rooms, that's the term they use, the transient guest tax applies. And four or more sleeping rooms, the sales tax applies. I don't know why it is, but that's what it is.
Makes it more difficult.
So, um, all of it applies to me. But in the case of Airbnb listings, Airbnb collects those taxes on your behalf and submits them on your behalf. If you're booking privately or through other sites to where that payment's coming directly through you, then we're submitting that to the Department of Revenue.
Well, so if you, I'm just going back to your space. Have you rent yours for a month? You don't have to collect it for the whole month, do you?
Um, so the transient guest tax applies either way, or no, I'm sorry, that up to twenty-eight days.
Oh, okay. So if you have somebody that books over twenty-eight days, then you don't have to collect it.
Ye, yes, I'll have to double check.
I, I, I just didn't know how that worked, so.
Well, that is true, I know, but I can't remember if it's the sales tax or the transient guest tax. One of them does not apply to anything over twenty-eight days.
You have more than four beds in your suites?
Yeah, that got complicated too. Well, it's three units.
That's what I was thinking.
But there's two beds in each.
Oh, so it's how many beds?
They called it sleeping room. So, I guess since it's a bedroom, then it's.
Oh, okay.
It got, yeah, it got complicated on the phone with their team. So.
Did that answer your question, Terry?
No, I really don't, but.
So if somebody is renting rooms and not submitting their sales tax and transient guest tax to the Kansas Department of Revenue, I don't know if I'd want to do that or not. I mean.
I see.
That's taxation, right?
Yeah, but the key thing is that nobody knows who's paying except for Austin, right? That's your concern. Not concern, but you're just wondering how.
It kind of gives Austin the control whether or not somebody has to pay it or not, or collect it.
They have no control. I have no, in fact, that's their setup. They don't want anybody but the state enforcing upon anybody, or debt collecting, basically. That's, we can't do that. In fact, if we were to use it in that manner, we would be penalized.
I mean, same mechanism that you would have to police, whether or not just a regular business would be submitting the appropriate sales tax dollars to them they're collecting.
Right. We'd never talk that much about transit, I guess. Thanks, Nick. So, back to the, what's before us is whether to increase it or not. So how do you guys feel?
I'll move to increase it.
One and a half, one and a half percent.
I'll second it.
Okay. There's a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-oh, all right. So you'll draft up an ordinance for next week?
Draft up the charter ordinance, so yes.
For next time?
Yep.
All right. All right. The next item is the sewer line for eleven thirty-nine J-Hock Road.
Mm-hmm.
So we ask you to bring back what the cost is.
Yep.
Based on the recommendations of Craig Olson, and that cost is a total cost together two hundred, two hundred and twenty feet?
That is actually, he doesn't say that. Oh.
It doesn't say anything about where it starts and stops.
Um, this is, I believe, three hundred feet from the, from the.
Manhole?
From the manhole to the, to the lift station, the grinder pump.
His grinder pump?
His grinder pump.
If we do this, does it, the property that's directly east of there, will it help access that property as well?
They would have to get their own line, just like, just like them. This only gets them maximum a two-inch service line for their, for their grinder pump, and it does not help anybody else.
Well, the key thing, based on the last meeting, and we discussed about the assessments and stuff, you know, there's only two potential houses that could potentially be added to the tax base out there without a huge new round of assessments, if it's even possible. So, that's really up to you guys, whether or not you want to accept to pay part of this, not accept to pay part of it. Yes.
I think the city should take care of that amount of feet, but really, there should be some thought into making it assessable, just like Austin just mentioned. It won't help to go to the east.
Yeah, to make it go out.
Why can't it be four inches, as long as you're putting the pipe in anyway?
Yeah, it, it just has to do with how deep that sewer line is and the drop and the hill sloping off to the east, that there's just no way to get a gravity flow line on down further to the east as.
That second piece of property will never be hooked up?
They'd have to put in a lift station, and they have to pump it over, have a pressurized line, two inch over to that manhole, just like what this house is having to do.
We wouldn't want.
Yeah, it's, it's just.
We wouldn't want to make it an L so that they could just hook in when they, whoever builds.
Uh, you wouldn't want, I don't think, pressurized lines. Are you talking like sharing the pressurized line?
That's a party line.
Yeah, I don't know if we'd want to do.
We're trying to just, we're trying to disconnect party line. Not that there's a pressurized line like you're talking about in town, but we're trying to disconnect all these party lines where they, people share each other's sewer. It, it.
Well, I was just thinking, if we could make it be the cities down the street, and then hook up here, and hook up here, that way we'd at least have that prepared for the next one. But.
But Austin, in, in the case of me being on a party line, the city wouldn't pay. I would have to pay.
Right.
So, this isn't any different.
Right. You know, Ryan Kroc built a house the other side of the street. He run just as much pipe. He didn't come in here asking for money for us to put his in either. I feel this, we're going to set a precedence if we pay this. I think it's wrong he even come here after the discussions we had here at City Council when he was here, and then he went and got a lawyer, and come back again.
No, no, no. Kevin, you can't hold that against him. We gave him incorrect information at City Hall. You can't hold that against him. The assessment time had ended.
Okay. Yeah, I still don't think he needs to come back for this amount here. He brought the property.
Okay, that's a different issue. That's, that's fine.
He knew that our property's set lower than the sewer did. You know, he knew he's going to have to put a grinder pump in. Next thing, he's going to want to come in here and want us to give him water to, a tap, so I think we just need to let him take care of it and be done with it.
So, is, um, is it consensus of council, just do nothing and have him incur whatever cost is to hook up?
Yep.
I think we're throwing away a lot of property taxes.
This doesn't mean just to be, he can decide to request a de-annex. This decision does not make him de-annex.
But he can de-annex.
He can, yeah.
And then, and then you lose that property tax forever, because we don't, we're not going to, or I should say, until we address the next phase, which could be a very, very long time.
Could be.
So you, you're giving up that property tax for that, whatever timeframe that is. Is that your decision?
It's my decision.
It's my decision.
Yes. Okay.
No, I'm going to stay away from it. I, I think we should put that, if it costs two thousand dollars to hook them up and make them happy, we're going to get it back real quick. And it's not going to set a precedent because they're not annexed. That's all going to be another can of worms to open up.
But it could be in another location, the same, same sort of issue.
It's like the information that Darlene brought last meeting, I mean, Manhattan, they assess them one hundred percent of the cost of those hookups.
Always.
And the precedent in Marysville is that we haven't. Just FYI.
Right.
So, anyway, I do think, you know, we talk all the time, we want young people to move back to our city. This is, it's a family, thirty-something, two kids, moving back to Marysville. So, but if that's the decision of this council, that's your decision. So you, you want to make a motion so that it dies or something, Terry? Because you're disagreeing.
Do I what?
It's not a, it's not a consensus of council, obviously, because you're saying no.
I am saying no.
So would you like to make a motion to pay for it, and then we can let it proceed?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that I think we should pay for it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second it, just so we can get it on the.
Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
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 One and four. Okay. We will communicate that. The next item is the safety lighting.
I did ask them to be here, and they asked me what time. So.
Well, we can wait till the end. I don't, Todd's here, he's the one that had all the questions. I don't think you answered the questions that he proposed.
Right. I, I asked them to come and answer those questions because I, they kind of went over, and I was like, you guys.
So Todd's not here, they're not here, so we'll proceed on.
Okay.
Okay. You can bring it to the next time if they want to come again.
Okay.
I'm not aware of any notices or hearings, so the next item is the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda. Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-oh. Next item is the appropriations ordinance.
Move to approve appropriation ordinance.
Is there a second?
Thirty-seven, ten, the amount of, hundred ninety-nine, three ninety-one, thirteen.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any questions? I do, uh, on the Protrack antennas, has anybody gone to look at the quartz?
Yes. And in fact, I inspected them before they did it, and it, it is a lot better than what they started, and they did everything they said they were going to.
Did you talk to Mary Kessinger? Because she stopped me and said, I need to go look at them, and I, I've been out of town.
She, she sent that email asking if we could put the, the nets back up for pickleball, and we did.
Yeah, but she, she told me I should walk on the quartz, that they're not very good. But you've talked to her, and she's okay?
They, I haven't talked, she hadn't asked me, she hadn't brought that concern. They did iron out some of the, the issues that were there that they didn't plan on doing, but there was, they fixed everything they could.
Mary's concern last time was, I guess you call it ball, yeah, dead ball bounds.
That was before. This, this sounded like something different, and she told me I should go look at it, and then I had to go to town.
I haven't been down and looked at it.
All right. No, it, as far as I could tell, it was, there, there were some bumps in the, in the out-of-bounds areas, and one of them specifically, they pointed to me, and they go, that's not a part of this, but I will try to smooth that out as best as possible, which they did, and there's still a bump there.
How could a bump not be part of it? Because they looked at the whole court. I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, they, but they dealt with the cracks, they deal with the cracks, and, and they, they covered all the cracks that we asked them to, and the, the bumps are in, are in the base. And they, they cover the cracks, they recolor, and, and that's what they were supposed to be doing.
Okay, well, I.
I wonder if, when they cover, cover the cracks, if they got it too high, and you can really feel the.
I didn't see that. I, I intentionally walked, like, did a zigzag through the whole thing, and I, I, it looked so much better than what it was before.
Well, maybe we need to wait until Mary checks it out and then approve it. We've been waiting for two weeks. It's not a big a deal, is it?
That's up to you guys.
Do you want to have Mary look at it, just to make sure? Like I said, I, I've been out of town, so. You want to pull that one and approve the rest? Do you want to amend your motion, Kevin?
Yeah, I move that we, well, just, yeah, I move that we pull the Protrack antennas incorporated in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine ninety-two oh one.
And pay the remainder?
Uh?
And pay the remainder, all the rest?
Yeah.
Who is the second?
Me.
Okay.
Second it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Roll call?
Boss?
Yes.
Kepia, Graham, Hughes.
Yes.
Fry, Schroller.
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Farm.
Yes.
All right, Austin, you're up.
All right. Next up, or, I brought the engineering for the waterline project, the, the cost for the, for CS to bid and, or to design and bid the next year, the rest of next year's waterline project is fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Do you guys have any questions? If not, you can make a motion to approve.
That's complete turnkey. We're not going to get involved in it at all, correct? Our crews?
We are, I, pretty, we only inspect. So we watch them do the work, but beyond that.
I mean, we're not going to go in there and have to dig anything?
No, 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 no.
This totally, hundred percent contractor.
Hundred percent, yep. Yeah. We, we keep an eye on them, that's about it for these projects.
Okay. Well, we haven't bit it out yet, but this is for the engineering side.
Right.
Yeah. That's a big loop, though, if you look on page thirty-nine.
Yeah, it is. Huge loop. Move to approve CS engineering. Second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-oh?
All right, the next one is the police officer raise. I did some calculations for a two dollar and forty cents raise for, basically, start a next paycheck. And for the remainder of this year, I calculated about three thousand, a little over three thousand dollars, based off of the estimated hours, including overtime. Those are overtime numbers as well. So, three, a little over three thousand dollars for the remainder of the year. And this is just the police officers, not Chief Ackerman getting a raise. And then I also estimated the twenty-twenty hours, including overtime and holiday pay. And that came out to be about a little less than sixty thousand dollars for next year. And that's just considering the police officers, including the people that are coming in.
Any questions about the two forty, or you can approve it?
How many people are you figuring coming in?
So the, I've, I've figured, even though we don't have a date, James Lee's coming back, and then the, the replacement for Sergeant Oldy is coming.
He has to start till after the first of the year.
Till January.
Okay.
Yep. And then we got the, I mean, we got the new hires, because the, all the current ones.
So there could be more?
No.
Or, or that puts it as full, at full, full staff?
Am I missing somebody?
Seven full.
Seven full?
Yeah, the only ones that won't affect will be the new precision chief and myself. We agree to dress that up in the first year.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
That two forty's on top of what, what was the line at to begin with? It's not mentioned in this.
What do you mean, the line?
Well, I think our.
Well, whatever the hourly wage was, we were putting two forty on top of.
I think our beginning was fifteen seventy-three, is that correct?
Fifteen eighty-three, I think.
Fifteen eighty-three.
Sounds about right, yes. That's ours.
What this does, it brings us up to the county level, is within six cents of each other.
Fifteen eighty-three?
Yeah. That's start, that's our starting wage.
So it'd be up to eighteen twenty-three. Of course, that's starting wage, and then it'll bump up every month accordingly as well.
Right.
Austin, have you had any conversation with the other department heads?
No. But they've, they've known this is coming.
I move to approve the two forty per hour raise for all the officers.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Library room? In the. And then I guess the second step we have to do is we talk, have to talk about chief. My only question is, do you know it's legal to do that for an exempt person? To pay holiday time?
We can make that, you guys can make that decision. I mean, that's if you want to give them two, what, two days of holiday pay?
No, I'm just saying if it's a law question, if we're federal.
No, it, it's, it's not, it's, it's, basically, it's your status. The, the status is what you set it up to be.
Exempt person, but right now, our policy manual says we don't, right?
Right. Right, that's why it's coming here, so you can.
So we would have to change our policy.
Or at least make an exception for this moment and then leave it after that.
But I would, I would like to know that it's legal from an exempt standpoint, either from the league or from our legal counsel. I'm just not sure it's legal.
Okay.
Like I said, you know, if it's legal, exemption status is what you make it. What, what the feds are telling you is you don't have to do it, but you can do it. It's like the Chief Tana Wamigo, he makes overtime, but he's still exempt.
Yeah.
Because you're exempt from certain things.
I guess I would just like to see it in writing. I mean, we can do it retro at the next meeting.
You do it.
I mean, the next meeting is, unless you guys want to vote on it now. I just would like to know that it is legal, that our lawyer or the League of Kansas Municipalities says it's legal. That's all I want to hear.
Or call the Department of Labor, because that's your sense of rule.
I mean, you guys, you guys can decide, you can, you can go ahead and vote if you want, or do you want to wait till next meeting?
I make a motion we don't give it.
I'd rather see something in writing and know that we're doing it right. If we're going to change a policy, everybody's against changing policies that have already done there. I think we ought to wind out first.
Okay. Or you can vote, it's your call. You guys.
I make a motion we don't give overtime. When you, when you're a salaried employee, you're a salaried employee. That's my opinion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So, okay, we have our first motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Just one comment about Diane, we're not talking about overtime, we're talking about holiday pay. There's a difference. I know overtime, I'm working today.
Well, holiday pay, whatever, I make a motion then, with holiday pay.
If you have anything else, I've been up since four thirty, I'm going home. If you need something else.
Well, just to clarify, Diane, your motion was.
For holiday pay.
Holiday or?
Overtime.
Overtime, was both.
Right.
Okay, and that was what everybody believed the motion to be? Okay. Okay.
Night.
All right. You're up next.
Fire station pricing, we're trying to make phone calls, trying to get information from different sources, local sources. When, when phone calls are made, they either weren't there or there were new people that didn't know what they were, what they were talking about, so I kind of went out, outside of the normal and asked our architect to provide some, from different examples of different funded projects for pricing. But I did, David actually made some, finally persisted and got some information from Frankfurt and Waterville and I included the Hanover number as well. Frankfurt added four bays for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, added six thousand square feet, used volunteers. Waterville put up six bay plus one in the back, so it's, they called it a seven bay, but Chief Richardson, six bays up front and one where they could park, they made it long enough, you could park a, a truck in the back. And they did a lease purchase for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars just for the building itself. They did, then, to our understanding, they had people who could do on the fire, on, on the fire department itself or through acquaintances that did a lot of volunteer work or at-cost work and they didn't have exact numbers on those, but that's the numbers they could give us. And then, as you know, the six thousand square feet from Hanover was five hundred and thirty-eight thousand and thirty dollars and then that letter from, from our architect, which didn't, included a whole bunch of different ones over, over the wide variety of time spans, even some recently, where, where are you at? I saw some, two thousand sixteen, two thousand nineteen for one of the Riley County Fire Departments. And then, some of them didn't have dates.
This Havensville, though, I mean, that was almost a hundred per square foot.
Yep.
And we're paying, what, a hundred and sixty-seven?
A hundred and seventy-three, I think it was.
Paying way too much.
Yeah.
And, and this other one, this, when you look at another metal building, that Pratt County, seventy-two-hundred, and they got a metal building for five eighty-five.
Right.
So.
So I specifically, I mean, yeah, just different funded, I specifically asked for things outside of CDBG just to see what we would get and this CanStep program is no longer available, but it's, it's one of those programs that require, that require volunteer work. And I've talked to Chief about possibly doing volunteer work and, I mean, there is a possibility we could get that, get some things done. He couldn't give a definite answer on that.
OBG also notes in there that you have to multiply, generally multiply by three point two seven five percent per year from the date up to twenty nineteen or twenty twenty to get the comparable current costs.
Right.
I still think.
So that'd make a difference.
I think we need to get, we, these metal building contracting like Pratt County, we need to find their builder and make sure they, they bid. We need to also do that.
And that one doesn't say what year they built that either.
And then that one, Havensville, Schultz Construction, we need to contact them, ask them to bid our building, I mean.
And that was twenty nineteen, so that's current.
That's, yeah, so that was about a hundred a square foot, so, and that's about what I, I was hoping would come in, about a million. So.
You were half right.
I'm half right?
You were half right, you come closer to two million, though.
Well, I'm just saying, I think it's critical when we go to bid, that we have the people that have put up metal buildings for significantly less than a hundred and seventy-three to get the bid documents in their hands.
Yeah, Schultz has done Oldsburgs and Wheaton's and Havensville, so in the area too, so.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of this Schultz Construction. Anyway.
A lot of them recently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On this side, you don't want to be, this is not the one where you want to be the high.
No, no.
So. Just make sure it gets bid out to all those people. We have a problem that a lot of times we don't get things bid out and we need to be intentional, not just, they didn't respond, we need to send them the documents, so.
Any other questions on the fire station pricing? Okay. Before I go to finances, I did put something out on, on your desk about the bathrooms. This is basically his invoice for, for the completion of the bathrooms. I will comment that, yes, they're not the best, but he did everything that was asked of him. And we paid, we did the low bidder and I think I'll take it, that's as far as I'll take it.
Have we paid them already?
No, this is, this is it. So it, basically, I'm bringing this to you just to make sure you're fine with us paying him.
Submitting it.
Submitting it. I will point out that his original bid, in which I put in there, according to these numbers, was twenty-seven one fifty. The bid came.
It's not what I come up with.
What, what'd you come up with?
Twenty-one eight hundred is what I had.
On, on this one? The one I just put on your desk? No, when I went back, when he originally put. I had to make some, the, the one that came.
But we were supposed to pay for that.
The, the one that, the one that you saw in the packet, I had to make clarifications and brought a second piece of paper and that was this piece of paper right here, because his, it was, his document was nonsensical.
Okay. Well, wait, wait, we, but he wasn't going to pay for any of the, that materials cost. That was irrespective, we were going to provide all the materials, right?
We provided the material and that's what this is right here.
And the twenty-seven is without the materials?
The.
Right there?
Or, yeah, no, no, this is with materials right here, that twenty-seven. That is with materials, so that's with what we paid for right there.
So really, we're paying them twenty-three thousand?
Yeah, the twenty-three thousand six twelve is what we would be paying them. Well, the, and then you add that water fountain in that we're using over at Main Street. So that total, twenty-four six twenty-six and twenty cents is what the check would be made out to. And, so I was just showing here, I took the fountain out, just to show you the, the, the project actually came in, he's charging us the lesser, a lesser amount than what was on this, correct, this document. Yeah, that twenty-six, six seventy-nine, seventy-four is with what we have, we purchased, what, and that is lined out on this one.
Austin, are you okay with the final?
There's, that's a loaded question. It's, again, he did exactly what was asked of him. There's nothing that can be changed without a complete renovation, again.
So not his problem, the building's problem?
Well, the, I mean, I don't know how to put this, but he did, all I can say is, he did what was asked of him in the bid documents. He even changed some things as we went along that I requested and didn't charge more in, in this thing. I would have been happier with a known product coming from one of the other contractors that bid, but that's the, the direction we decided to go with. And again, I, I don't want to talk anymore, I don't want to, I don't want to degrade anybody.
But they maybe wouldn't have done a good job, you never know what.
You never know what you're going to get.
But that's true, you don't know what another person would have done either.
So, at this point in time, I, with confidence, he did everything that we set out to do.
Okay.
I think the floor is the worst.
Well, they fixed the floor, though.
I know, but I just don't like the plain color. I think it makes it show up more. I think the plain color makes the floor show up more.
The, the change that would have been made would have thrown a color, a fleck on there that would have clashed.
Or, or, yeah, or a tile floor, maybe.
Tile, tile would have been good, but I think we were strongly, once we went epoxy, there was no going back.
Yeah. I think the.
Yeah, I was, is that, is that the spec that I thought we were going to put in? I didn't think.
Yeah, but I thought we were going to. Yeah, this is epoxy and it also came with a, either a bag or a container of fleck that you put down while it was still drying, that we decided not to do the fleck because it would have thrown out some white, white flecks, there's no white in them and it would have looked really odd. So, the, I, the floor is immensely better than what it was before and I'm, I'm happier with what, what is down versus what he had before.
It is a pretty ugly color, but you don't spend a lot of time in there, so. I mean, the floor.
Well, there's no grout, that's what I wanted to avoid, is grout. Yes, Terry?
Is, over at the city building there, is that all done too already?
The water fountain?
Water fountain.
No, it's not, it's not there yet. We, we know how we're going to do it, we have the water fountain in, it is not installed yet, David has to push some time over there for it.
The only reason I'm bringing it up, because part of this is going to be the cost to put it in, right?
No, 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 no. Yeah, that second, that, so there's a water fountain line that's twelve fifty, that's for this water fountain right here.
Okay.
The extra, the one line down, the thousand fourteen and twenty cents, that's the cost of the, that water fountain over there. So he, he saved us some shipping or freight, bringing both of them up at the same time.
Well, the only reason I was asking that question is that I, I see a lot of people that use the trail every day and the questions come up to me, they're all physical fitness freaks to begin with and don't want to drink out of the tap water to begin with. And actually, maybe we could talk to Markan about putting a dispenser deal over there, a coin operated where you got clean or distilled water or whatever somebody wants.
You mean bottled water?
Yeah. Instead of having a, putting a fountain in costs them whatever it's going to cost to do it. If you're not interested, you already bought it.
Yeah, the, and that fountain's going to have filtered water on it. It, this one has a filter on it, so it's, it's much better than.
Do you drink this water fountain?
As a, yeah, as a, as a fitness freak, I'll drink whatever water I can find if I'm thirsty.
When you're thirsty.
I'll drink out of awful tasting, I drink some farms, you wouldn't believe.
Even out of a hot hose.
Yeah, it tastes awful, tastes like the hose.
Yeah.
I know that flavor too well.
All right, let's move on.
All right, okay. Let's see. All right, shoot here. All right, the general fund for the financials is about fifty K above last year's balance. We are expecting a forty thousand dollar reimbursement for handheld radios to put in the general fund. We paid for the radios out of the general fund, so that should be, excuse me, make the general fund that much better. The water and sewer funds had a higher than usual expenditure. Sewer was the last payment for the CIPP and water included some purchased materials. For all these funds, we also had an extra payroll, which is pretty typical. And then for sales tax, it increased another thirty-four thousand. Any questions on that?
All right, we'll move along to street committees. Congratulations to Brian Gunther for being promoted up for Assistant Street Supervisor and I read in the highlights where we did not get the cost share, the K dot cost share.
Yes.
And so I did see a press release on that and it said that there were ninety-two applications for two hundred and forty-two million, so it was a much sought-after, sought-after money.
Right, and they, they said they will hold on to our application, which is halfway surprising for a grant procedure, but for the spring, they will already have our application and if, we will probably need to submit supplemental information.
So that, that was for the fifty million, right? Or the sixty-five million?
Those, we.
Did they grant all fifty or the sixty-five, do you know?
It was, it was that fifty million that you did a twenty-five.
The one-time thing?
Yeah, you did the twenty-five percent match and then they also had eleven million that was a, oh, I forget how, a smaller percent match.
Fifteen percent.
Yeah, fifteen percent match, I think, yeah, I would guess they granted it all out.
Okay, anybody, anybody else on street? Water sewer, congrats to Heather and Jacob Felty for their new baby and the only other thing, I read in the highlights that there were two hundred meters that weren't red, isn't that a high number?
Yes. And we're, with the, we've been experiencing increasing issues and I think we're going to be able to solve at least some of them by our new meters that we're putting in. Yes, it takes, it's taking extra time to get those meters red and they're.
Is that because they're the old ones that?
Yeah, they're old ones and they're ones with replacement antennas on them and, I mean, there's bearings. Yeah, they're old ones, and they're ones with replacement antennas on them, and, I mean, there's varying issues with what we found.
I remember hearing that there were two hundred before. How many total meters do we have out there?
Six, sixteen to seventeen hundred.
So, so, one eighth of them we had to go read manually?
Yeah. Yep. Uh, which-
Deletes our drive-by.
Quite a few, yeah.
Yes.
That's a lot.
Were they in common areas, or are they just completely spread? I'd be interested to see what that looked like.
Some of them were, it was like a whole street that they missed, and others places it was random.
So at least maybe that saved them a little bit.
Right.
Cause otherwise, driving every fifth house all over town would take a long one.
Right. I know that's a hot button for you. Do you want to say something, Terry?
No.
Okay.
I heard that there was a large, like, six thousand dollars worth of water bill that wasn't collected.
We're working through that, uh, through a legal process right now. Yeah.
So, is, is there a way to, in the future, prevent that?
Yes, and, and I think it's, it's, it was a mistake a few years ago, a few, quite a few, a few years ago that caused this. That, uh, a vacant house, or so, a miscommunication between lando, uh, the landowner and the, and the tenant and, and the city. And since then, there have been measures that have been put in place that would prevent that sort of thing from happening, but this was before that, uh, quite a bit before.
So now we would know if something like this happened, okay?
To a better extent, yes. Yeah, we've got measures in place then.
Any other wonders, sir?
Joanne Lacy stopped me again and said that she hadn't heard anything from anybody.
Um, her son pointed out where she wanted the dirt, and we put it there, so-
When?
When did she stop you?
Sunday.
Wow. Um, let's see. They sta, let's see, they stopped by the house, well, probably was this morning.
Okay.
That they did that, yeah. Uh, and where she wanted the dirt apparently was around a tree. Uh, so we, just, just to make it all better, we put dirt around the tree.
I hope so.
Ken?
Uh, Second and Broadway. Looks real good with a landscape, but do we have a water leak there now?
Oh, don't tell me that, Ken. Where we just did the four sewer main? You see water running there?
There is a wet spot in the dirt.
Where at?
Just inside the curb.
Inside the curb by the overpass?
No, on Second Street, or, sorry, it'd be Third Street, Third Street, on Second, Third Street.
On the east side of the street, or the west side?
West Side Street.
West side of the street, there's a-
Right by the-
Where they just put it?
Where the-
Force main?
Air tube is.
Mm-hmm.
About ten feet north of that, there's a blue pipe that's coming up out of the ground. And it's right, it's all black around that. It's been like that for about a week.
I'll check on that. I will check on that.
Did we, did we just pay them tonight?
Yeah, but that wouldn't affect, the water leak wouldn't be them. It would-
It's not the force main?
I don't think it's force main. It's not, it's not forced out, it's just wet around it, so-
I'll, I'll, I'll check on that, yes.
All right.
It's not like the street's bubbling up.
By the way, Ingham End did some great job. Do you, the, all that dirt work around there looks awesome.
Oh, yeah, no, they did a fantastic job of working the dirt down and tilling it and, uh, piracying it and laying the mesh and all that. They did, I thought they did a fantastic job.
Maybe they put grass seed down, they're just keeping it wet.
It's only spot about like that, Terry.
Okay. All right, anything else, Water Sewer?
No.
Parks Rec, Cemetery Airport?
I had a question on the airport. I noticed, um, I think two different, uh, I don't know if it's Lightstar or whatever, the medical helicopter flights, they're landing in the, um, on the tie-down area instead of on the helipad. Is the helipad out of service for some reason?
Not that I know of.
Just pilot choice, I wonder?
Probably pilot choice, cause that's a nice big spot to land on.
And the helipad's kinda tight?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's smaller comparatively, yeah.
Okay.
To have a nice big landing area like that, I, I could see that. Are we okay with that? Is that okay?
I assume if there's not an aircraft there, whatever, it's fine, but I just, I noticed that, and I thought that was unusual.
You saw them land there?
Yeah. No, I, I wouldn't see, see that as a big issue to us as long as-
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something like there was a crack in the helipad, or the lights were malfunctioning or something.
No, I will have-
And there's no FAA thing about, the helipad has an insignia on it, doesn't it?
It does, but I, I think in, for medical emergency, they've got a lot of leeway.
FAA doesn't-
They can pretty much land wherever they want.
As long as they, yeah, the pilot feels comfortable.
They can still land at the hospital if they want.
Yeah, they've got that pad there, although I think it has some rubble or something on it. I don't know.
I don't think it's very cleaned off.
Yeah, I don't think they've been using it for a while.
Not for a long time, I don't think.
All right, Lightstar. Okay, police fire?
I'm glad that, uh, we'll soon be up to full staff again with the police.
Yeah, that was good. Admin and Finance?
Um, have we got, uh, a report yet from the Kestner House Museum?
Oh, on count? Attendance?
Yes, on, well, on attendance, on, on the paid admissions, on the number, what is working?
Deb was working on that.
She's working on that. Good, because, you know, last year-
Last year, where they didn't like us waiting till it was museum season?
Well, they'd already, already printed-
When we got those numbers, when we got the numbers back, I, I put it right, uh, Deb was starting to work on it, yeah.
Good.
Okay.
What about the new trees? We got all the new trees replaced now?
Yes, all the trees are replaced.
Okay. And they're watering them, I hope?
Yes, yep.
Okay, um, Jason, are you okay with these two, moving on to appointments, are you okay with these two?
I'm fine, yeah, I'm fine with them.
Okay, cause they don't take office-
Yeah, that's fine.
Till January, so I just want to make sure. Okay, so, uh, my appointments, our appointments would be Adam Turner and Gina Bartles to the Convention and Tourism Board.
May I approve the mayor's appointments?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six-oh. City Attorney's not here, I don't have any reason for an executive session. The only roundtable I was gonna talk about was the civic engagement, where, do you prefer to cover that, Darlene, since you're in charge of the city?
I'm really in charge.
Well, I'll talk about my part. So, uh, so, I, I was there doing volunteerism for the city, and the gentleman in my office, my office in my room, were, uh, Brian Fargo, Chair of Convention and Tourism, Kevin Cromie, Chair of Planning and Zoning, and Nick Stoll, who was in both committees. And they shared with the ninth graders about volunteering for these committees, ensuring that they don't get paid, and the benefits of volunteering, uh, you know, kind of talking a little bit about zoning, why you wouldn't want, why they look at things and why it's important, and they had some input, and we, and they got, I'm talking, and then, um, from Convention and Tourism, just gonna say that had marketing Marysville and things like that, and talk about transit guest tax, so, they did a good job in my room, so.
And, uh, for, um, my area of civics, um, I had asked the fire chief, David Richardson, and Assistant Fire Chief, um, Joe Pissel, and, um, I asked, uh, I asked the one class, I said, um, are any of you interested in volunteering? Of course, they're only fourteen and fifteen at this point, and they, they didn't seem to be, but one teacher, um, after the class was over, expressed an interest, so-
Well, that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
You might want to give that name, does, so did he talk to Chief about it?
Yes, he did.
Awesome.
He did, so Chief knows. Um, also, um, the KSU visioning, uh, visioning for those of you who didn't get to come, um, these are for the downtown area, and then out in the hallway are the ones for the, um, for the-
U.P. Depot.
U.P. Depot. So if you haven't taken a look, um, there are some things I think, you know, we could talk about starting soon, especially the signage. And none of these really show it, but one earlier, when I was watching a video conference, they showed like a round sign for, like, a museum and the points of interest, using, you know, something different than rectangle.
Different shapes.
But they've got, they've got some good ideas.
Well, the students did a phenomenal job explaining their projects, and they were very, they were very good, and, and they sold on what they were presenting was great for our city, so they did a great job.
Yeah, and their professors said, uh, they were kind of, they were excited and nervous because they are used to presenting to their professors in their class, but not to the general public. But, and then the general public, I thought, was, was very interested and impressed with their work.
Yeah, they jumped in on conversations though. I mean, they were very knowledgeable in what they were passionate about, so.
And I thought like, the, that one group working on the northwest part of town that's been-
The FEMA lights.
Uh, it would be nice if we could use some of those ideas and put in little park areas, and so people would have more pride in that area. You know, there are new, new houses going up and have been, like Nick's put, put up new houses. Oh, and one other thing, I might, um, Chief has left, but, uh, he talked about, we can't do, uh, discuss an employee, but I was talking about council members, and we have to discuss council members-
In open session.
Elected officials in open session.
If they want to, if they want to point something out, it should be in open session. True. We can't talk about elected officials in closed session.
No.
Uh, when you're talking about KSU visioning, um, I have made arrangements for all these, since obviously, you can see them sitting on the ground, and sitting on the ground up there, and all bunched together. For the remainder of the month, all these are gonna be moved over to the Art Center, uh, so people can come, uh, when the Art Center is open and look at them, uh, and take the time to-
Well, they just talked about that arts thing going on, uh, for when the parade is, so will they take them down then?
Yeah, at the, at the end of the month, uh, they'll-
Oh, just for the month of November?
Yeah, just for, from now until then.
Is there any art sho, show there right now?
No.
Okay. So just to encourage people to go look at them?
Yes, yep.
How about putting a little blurb in, on Broadway about it?
Okay. All right, anything else? Terry?
No.
Todd?
Um, I saw in the, uh, highlights about you were talking to Washington about recycling. I just appreciate that. Please keep us updated on things you don't know about.
He was kind of excited about it, uh, whether his, his commission would be okay with us joining in or something like that, but they have the setup, they have the, the, the working capital that we could utilize.
I don't know if it'd make any difference or not, but if you end up needing people or anybody to go over and talk to him about it, sign me up, I know all their commissioners.
So let's see, you're the, the biking, what did he call you, and now you're the tree cycling guru?
What was it, exercise nerd or something like that?
Fitness freak.
So we'll add that to your resume.
I like nerd better than freak.
Anything else, Todd?
That's it.
Diane?
Well, I also went to the school today.
Yes.
So, and, uh, we had gardening and landscaping, and we had a really good bunch. Beth Skinner and Sharon Kessinger and myself and Cheryl Sparks, uh, were there, and, uh, they did a really, the lady did a really, really good job. They took pictures of the horse and the Kestner Museum, uh, gardens, and also the water tower hill, and the kids were really very receptive. In fact, as we got volunteers who signed up, maybe, we have emails-
For kids to come weed?
Well, yes, a couple, a couple of them-
I'm sorry.
They're not having the way she did.
I got, I got so excited.
I don't think that's what she said.
They don't just weed, we also, they, they also to plant, to weed and to plant, cause Karen, cause of Kestner House, they're planting bulbs and things, so, and just that are interested in helping. They, they didn't necessarily say just weed to, to help with, with the gardens. And we asked them what their favorite gardens were, and what their favorite flowers were, and so we just had some really good discussions today.
Well, you had quite the visuals, I'm impressed.
Yes, yes, so, we even had a couple of the adults, I think, I'd, uh, that were, that signed up that were there. And so it was very, very interesting.
We didn't get any volunteers on planning and zoning and convention tourism, disappointed.
So, but, uh, we have some email addresses and some phone numbers and some names, so, it was very good. We really enjoyed ourselves today, so-
Yeah, our guys, they did encourage people wherever you're passionate to volunteer. They emphasized that several times.
So, so hopefully we got some people that'll help, know whether they'll actually come when we call them or when we, when we send them out the emails, I don't know. But basically Sharon's one that's really needing help now, because they've got, I think they have three thousand bulbs or something, and they've still got a thousand, some of the plants that they want to do yet this winter, uh, so that they'll come up this spring, you know? Now, now the horse, uh, that, that's pretty much dead for the, for this, for this winter, so, but hopefully they'll show up this spring, so. But anyway, we had a good time, so.
Good, well, thank you.
Yes, so.
Is that it, Diane?
Yes.
Kev?
Nope.
Jason? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Should I move?
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?